Here we'll get a few of those administrative things done and then we'll see what we can do first. So, calling to order the zoning board of appeals newly formulated for the village of Webster, December 17, 2020, time is approximately 5:30 PM. And we're meeting about an hour and a half ahead of time as our first meeting together as a whole group to take care of some administrative items and talk about how we're going to organize ourselves. Then we'll talk a little bit about our roles and responsibilities sometime around 7:00 PM. At least one applicant will show up and we will begin our process. So, having said that, first order of business is first of all, let's do a little bit of an introduction for ourselves, first time as a group. I'm Brock Nicholson, I've been appointed chair by the zoning board. Over to my left, Christopher Crinkley, previous planning board chair. Michael Connor, Bill.
Will Baker, from the old zoning board.
Kathy goes on the planning board many years.
Very good, and we have both alternates with us here tonight. We are a board of five, but the alternates are expected to fill in whenever we need them. Oh, who are over there?
Dee Valas.
Dee? Larry Hoffman. Very good. All right, so one of the first items that's been listed in our agenda is the appointment of a secretary. The resolution by Laura says that we can appoint a secretary, anybody we would like to appoint. There are some obvious choices, but I'll open that up to an appointment.
Do I make, do I make a motion?
Yes, let's make a motion.
Joe Neil is our secretary.
Joe Neil's been appointed, do I get a second? I got multiple seconds. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Joe, if you are willing, you are our appointed secretary.
Thank you.
All right. The other thing that's in here is the previous zoning board meeting minutes and then the previous planning board meeting minutes. Now, a little bit of a conundrum here, because while we clearly have at least three members of the zoning board or the previous zoning board who are at that meeting, we only have two members from the planning board who are here, plus we have our two alternates. So, any suggestions? Well, let's do this, if you had a chance to review the zoning board of appeals minutes.
Yes.
Okay, can we have a motion to amend or approve them as written?
Do we have a motion that we approve them as written?
Bill's got a motion, Michael?
I second.
Michael seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. All right, taken care of. Now we have to do the zoning or the planning board meeting minutes. Now typically, what we have done in the past is you have to have been here as a member of the board. But right now, our new board only consists of two people who are on the board. So, let's come out of left field here. Don, can we just ask the other two alternates to step in and review those for this one case? Or can't we do that?
I've never heard of doing anything like that. There's actually no requirement-
I know that.
-that minutes even get approved by a body? They're the secretary's minutes?
Yep.
So, my suggestion would just, you know, don't take a vote, but if anybody's got any changes or additions, they are what they are.
Okay, so we've got the zoning, the planning board of appeals meeting minutes. Last meeting apparently was 6/4/2020. Either the present members who are on the board have any objection to the content or the way it's laid out at those particular meeting minutes?
No, we make a motion that we approve them as is.
No objection.
Kathy's got no objections? Okay, the board chose no objection to the meeting minutes as written, and that's how we'll leave it in the meeting minutes. Typically, what we would do though, and it's been a practice, to approve them by the board. They are a matter of the public record at that point, but they were a matter of the public record anyhow. But we'll continue to go through that, I think it's a good practice at a minimum. All right, so being our first meeting here, I asked us all to come in at 5:30 so that we could go over some of the roles and responsibilities, how we're going to act and function. And I am thrilled to death that Don is here, and I'm going to ask him to talk to us a little bit about how we handle things when we are asked to give preliminary site review and a variance all at the same time and do a secret review and so on and so forth, or what do we need to be thinking about? Does our 30-minute, or excuse me, does our 60- or 62-day clock turn on for the first meeting if we ask for something in addition? Help us out here.
Well, you asked about seven or eight things.
I did, I did.
So, we need to take things one at a time, for one thing. And first you said, you know, you consider things one at a time. You don't do a variance and site plan or subdivision review at the same time. You gotta, you know, what's before you first? You know, you can do the variance first, you can do preliminary site plan or subdivision approval first, but you gotta start one task and finish it before you go to another. That's my suggestion, you know? It's just like if there were separate zoning boards and planning boards, it's the same thing, you know? You know, so, I guess in the future, and Will won't be with us for much of the future, but I would suggest in the future that the public notice and the agenda, instead of lumping things together as this one does, that you list them separately. Applicant seeks A, and then Will and I had a discussion about this. Actually, what they are seeking is preliminary subdivision plan approval. And then B, the variance, you know, instead of, just clear it that way. Instead of lumping it all in a big paragraph, that's more stylistic than anything else. But, I don't know, the 62-day clock, Chris probably knows. As, you know, as the former planning board chairman, it's, you gotta, I think it's from the 62 days, it is from when they ask for a final subdivision approval. You have to, you have to have the public hearing within 62 days of that, and then you have to have a decision within 62 days following the public hearing. Will has agreed to table? Well, I suppose if the applicant agrees to extend the 62 days, then, you know, they're not, if they consented to that, they're, you know, they can't complain. But, but normally, and again, you know, Chris chime in whenever you want to, but usually, the hard work in a subdivision or site plan review is done at a preliminary stage. That's when, you know, you go in detail through the proposal and if you need more information or new studies or whatever, you ask for it then. And so that by the time it gets to final, final is, it's pretty much a done deal by what the project is going to look like at that point.
Right, so, I mean, back when this was originally brought to the planning board, where was that, back in?
June? June 4th?
Yeah, June 4th, okay. So they came, they presented to the board-
Sketch plan.
An informal proposal. They were looking for, obviously, board input, which they received, suggestions, any information from the board that from our previous experience in subdivision development. And then the project went into hiatus for consideration of those recommendations and suggestions, and I think that's where we are today. And I would assume that in that interim period, that they've probably been working with you and probably, I think, alluding me-
Jake.
Jake, right, to get all the I's, D's crossed as far as drainage issue, paving issue, access issue, whatnot. So, I see here in our agenda meeting, they're looking for preliminary and subdivision plan approval. I assume there's a word missing in there, and are they looking for final approval tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
Preliminary is the overall.
Actually, the "and" shouldn't have been there.
Okay.
That's what confused me, as to what exactly were they doing, asking for. But if you look at their cover letter, all they're asking for is preliminary.
Okay.
And the variance. But again, what, you know, hopefully, everyone has looked at, you know, Village Code, section 137.5, which is the procedure for subdivision approval. Raise your hands if you did not, and I'll scold you. Because really, what is Will suggested in his email to everybody several weeks ago? You need to look at Village Code 137.7 for subdivision review, and you need to look at 137.41 of the code for site plan review, even though the Village Code calls it controlled use permit. It's really site plan approval, but they use that weird phrase that I've only seen in the village of Webster, controlled use. Everywhere else it's site plan.
They want the town or Trailblazers to-
Well, either that or you're just- Either that or you're just 50 years behind the times. I'm not sure. But, so those are the two that you need to be familiar with for the zoning board members that are now new zoning board, which includes planning board responsibility. You know, and for the planning board people, you need to look at the section in the code on the zoning board, which the number is escaping off my foot top of my head. But that would be Board of Appeals 175.77 for the procedure. And in that procedure, it's got almost verbatim from the state statute, what are the standards for a use variance and an area variance. But, so briefly, you know, under 137.7, the way the village has it set out for subdivision approval, there's three steps. Under, there's sketch plan review, which they've already had. Then there is preliminary plan review. And under the preliminary plan review, there's no public hearing that's required under that stuff. And then, you know, and technically, you really don't even need to give an approval. You just, again, it's a chance to review the plan and ask for changes. And then, and then they make the formal application for final subdivision approval. And that is when a public hearing is required, within 62 days after they submit their complete application. And then, within 62 days of the hearing, you gotta make a decision unless everybody's consented to go beyond the 62 days. But that is subdivision approval. And if you looked at the, you know, some of the handouts from NICOM that Joe was nice enough to provide everybody, they give a good summary of, you know, what site plan review is all about and subdivision approval, that's all about. And also, it talks about the responsibilities and the methodality of, for the ZBA. There's also, you can go on the New York State Department of State website, and there's a handout on site plan review. And it, as one of their attachments, they go through typical development considerations that planning boards, or in this case zoning boards, should consider, you know, regarding, you know, compatibility with the surrounding area, natural features, and circulation for vehicular and pedestrian, and then design and aesthetics and all that kind of stuff. As Chris could probably tell you, there are no real hard and fast, unlike the ZBA, there's no real hard and fast criteria for whether you approve or deny subdivision or site plan approval. You just can't be arbitrary and capricious. That's what, if you get sued with an Article 78 procedure, that's what a judge is going to look at. You know, as long as there's a sound and substantial basis in the record for whatever you did, you know, generally speaking, a court's going to go along with it. So- So there's no five-step review or five questions that you need to ask? Not for planning board stuff.
But I would add to what Don is saying is you should also familiarize yourself with the comprehensive plan and the design guidelines that are included in a comprehensive plan. Because the guidelines aren't law, but they're a good blueprint for, you know, when you're looking at site plans, for what the village is looking for regarding, not just aesthetics, but, you know, more walkable communities, the web sidewalks, and so on, things like that. So, those are other things that we can look at. So that, like Don was saying, you know, arbitrary and capricious, if you're making a decision, that's a good way to avoid being arbitrary and capricious by looking at our design guidelines and so on and so. And plus, our code gives, you know, a lot of guidance as far as what you're going to be looking for on the site, you know, amenities, depending on what type of plan we're looking at, whether it's a single-family home or, like in this particular case, townhomes. Are they providing a playground? Are they providing open space? Are they providing a clubhouse or, you know, a place for a community center, something like that? The code talks a little bit about some of that. But again, as Don said, you're also getting a little bit of leeway. And some of that leeway will come from comments that you'll get from the public. Sometimes you'll get something from the public that's a really great idea, and you can incorporate that into your decision. But that doesn't necessarily mean everything the public says is something that you have to incorporate. I think you guys know that by now. Thank you all, sorry.
Don, can variance if we set or granted contingent upon final site plan approval? Is, when I looked at this, what jumped out at me was if we grant the variance, but it doesn't get final site plan approval or whatever, that we've locked in that piece of property doing 25, 40, 50, 40?
No, because the variance, you know, it was granted for that specific project. So if the project, remember, if the project never gets final approval, then yeah, they got a variance, but...
So down the road, someone-
That's what I'm looking at. Well, someone would have to submit the identical plan. And if they submitted the identical plan, why would it, I suppose it could be a different board, and maybe you're going to grant final approval then, but... Every plan generally, every project, everyone's unique, you know? So, what are the odds of, you know, 10 years from now, somebody submitting an identical townhouse project? Probably not.
So if a variance got granted, it would only be applicable if they build that project?
Yeah, it can be specific to the project. Each project stands on its own merit. It's not a variance to the property, because if the property development changed to something else, the variance would not apply, may not apply.
You know, the only difference, you know, this is an area variance. So the area variance, it goes to those specific buildings that show up in that plan. If the buildings never get built, then there was no, there's no, the grant of the variance is moot. Doesn't matter.
They have a year for construction.
If it was a use variance, that might be a different story, you know? If it was zone residential and now you give them a variance for something commercial, theoretically, that could run with the land, and if somebody came in with a similar use, although it's a different project, they already got the variance. But this, you don't have to worry about that, because this isn't a use variance application.
But I think we need to review the variance for this instance first. Because basically, if we don't grant that variance, they gotta come back with a new whole design.
Variance first, final site plan approval first. Because without the variance, final site plan approval-
Right, they're basing the whole plan on getting the area variance.
See, the builder wants to know whether they're going to get the variance now, because it's not till after final site plan. Because without the variance, the whole plan goes down the drain, and they gotta start over. And they don't want to waste all their money, you know, by having to start all over again if you're not going to give them a variance. Okay, so typically, if there were two separate boards, you know, you would be here just as the zoning board and the variance. You would do that now, and depending on whether you granted it or not, then they'll apply for the preliminary site plan approval, depending on whether they got the variance or not. If they don't get the variance, they might decide the next going through with the whole project. And we've had instances where the planning board said, yep, we like the plan, and the zoning board said, no, we're not going to grant the variance. So then they have to come back to the planning board with a change. So in other words, you don't have to make the variance condition upon final site plan approval. It's just, it's by implication, it's only, it only kicks in if they build the project and they don't get ones if they got a final subdivision and site plan approval.
What else do we need to think about? In general?
In general.
So when you say we-
What's so matter? Check into-
Wait, you know which time you got?
We got an hour to kill here, so-
When you say we, are you referring to the board in general, or just to the zoning, or just the planning?
To the board in general, or one board right now. I would invite them both together.
So has, I'll just ask this question. The items that we sent, has everybody at least perused them, gone through them, and then just kind of given them even a rough overview? Have you all looked at that? Let me just ask you this, from what you've read, did you write down any questions that you have? Any concerns? You know it perfectly, you've got it down.
It's all incredibly simple. You act on what's brought before you. You have a set of steps you go through. You check the impact to the community, you listen to them, and you render some kind of a decision. I mean, that's really about it, and it's a generic way of everyone. The only difference between, probably the main difference between zoning and planning is you guys have the five criteria. And so you're kind of governed by that, that's New York State law. That's New York State municipal village law, whether it's going to be town or village, whatever. But anyways, so the five criteria that we have in our code is, you know, pretty much mirrors what the state laws, so you've got that. The difference is the planning board has a lot more leeway. So when you look at it from a planning perspective, you know, you could talk about the color of the brick, you could talk about the type of plantage, you could talk about, you know, whether or not they have sidewalks on one side or both sides, how they do the drainage, you know, whether they have gutters or whether they have a center drain or whatever. Those things. So it gives you a little bit more. And then, like I said before, what's good about the public input is, you know, Mrs. Jones, the entrance to her house, you know, is across from somebody's driveway, and they're going to have their headlights, you know, shining in her bedroom window, and can we do something about that? Can we put up a berm or plantings or things like that? So their input guides you as to the decision you're going to make with the final site plan. So right now, preliminary, this is what it's all about. This is trying to get a lot of that taken care of in advance so that when they do come back with the final, it lines up with, you know, not just the comments from the public, but what you want, what the comprehensive plan says, what our design guidelines say, and what our code says that it'd be quite. I'm going to say something else along those lines. The other, the other thing that I would recommend is that when the board is giving input to the applicant, one of the things I've noticed in the past, not necessarily with, you know, this board with it, that board with someone, is there is a thought that the applicant understands everything that the board is asking of them. And there was an instance where I said to the board, I said, because I could tell from the body language of the applicant, they're like a deer in the headlights, they don't know what they want. So I said to the board, I said, could you just delineate what you, you know, the five or six items you want to see on the plans? And so the chairman started saying this, this, and one of the other people on the board said, no, no, that's not what I meant, I meant this, no, I meant this. So to come to a consensus, to the point where you can put it into, you know, points, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or whatever this, how many it ends up being, so that the applicant knows exactly what you're asking them from. Does that make sense?
Good.
So I got a question for you. Do we have consultants?
We can have consultants, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if the village has on retainer consult, like for instance-
No, we don't have anybody on retainer.
For instance, for-
No, it is true, we don't have anybody on retainer.
Like landscaping?
We don't.
You know, I do-
The village has a contract with Lobella Associates, who's in architecture and-
The village has a contract with Lobella Associates, who's in architecture and engineering, where they, in essence, are the village engineers. And it's an ongoing contract. They only get, you know, they get paid by the job. It's not like the village pays them X dollars per year, but but they are the village engineers. And I would note that under 137-5D preliminary plan, it actually says, "The village clerk shall refer," shall, it's not even discretionary, "refer the preliminary plans to the village engineer, who shall in turn report the village engineer's recommendations to the planning board." Now, rarely if ever does that happen. So for whatever reason, internally, the village decides to just ignore that part of village code. But this board certainly has the authority to say, "No, we want Lobella to look at the plan and give us their comment." You could do that tonight if you wanted.
Well, no, the only reason I'm asking is like, I've been doing engineering for twenty some odd years. I couldn't care less about landscaping. But I want landscaping to live, whether, you know, a pine tree's gonna do, you know, right there or, you know, a burning bush or something. There's too many diseases and stuff like that that I don't know what's coming and going besides the ash core or whatever. So to me, that's what I wanted to know was, can we say, well, can we have Lobella then?
Sure.
If there are, look at the landscaping to make sure that what they're proposing is feasible.
Yeah, I didn't realize we had a budget with that. They were just for, when we do grants and things like that, you know.
There is such an animal. It was about five or six years ago.
No, it's only...
Five, you know, I...
Talk with Jake about it.
Yeah.
Do we have a line item in the budget for that? No, it would go back to the applicant.
Okay.
As far as I know.
I would say so. Because I'm assuming you do most of the engineering review.
Yeah, I do a lot of the site plan, stormwater stuff, and then Jake looks at it from the infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, like lighting, I mean, is it dark sky compliant? You know, I could say if it's got house shields on it and whatever, yeah, sure, it's dark sky compliant. But if it's a new LED bulb that we wanna use rather than a metal halight, you know, that's, you know, I can say I would want LED, but...
That's what Jake wants.
I was just curious.
But in the plans, it has specs for the lamps.
Which are... And then also, like...
Well, so again, we probably shouldn't be discussing this particular application without the applicant here.
Yes.
I thought this was gonna be a general discussion.
Oh, it is. I'm just saying if we have landscape consulting. I'm not saying they, I don't like their landscape plan. I'm just saying if...
You can, look, again, if you wanna refer it to a consultant, you can do that.
I saw that as a general question about, do we have this and is this an option open to us regardless of the budget?
Yes, you can do that. And something like that, you know, procedurally is probably best at the concept or sketch plan stage to maybe make such a referral, but, you know.
Well, at least not Commander Lansky when in the sketch plan.
Well, that, I don't wanna talk specific, but at the preliminary plan, it is suggested to applicants that they provide traffic control plans, lighting plans, trash management, snow management, all that stuff. And then you see what you get back on the next go-through. So then you obviously judge plans again based on those merits.
But I believe what Don said, they've done all the work at the preliminary stage. You're basically just stepping the final at section one or whatever as long as it matches the preliminary plans.
Well, good suggestions have been implemented to the greatest extent possible. They've done their best, you know, and then they're gonna submit stamp certified plans ultimately.
Well, so are we saying that we're gonna look at these plans and if we like them or don't like them, we're gonna go with them? In the fact, to me, if we make suggestions, to me, if, so if we make suggestions, wouldn't we want to maybe table the application until we see what their responses are? Because they might come back and say, "You know what? We didn't care what Mike had to say. We're not gonna do anything, so this is where we're gonna go with, so we want these."
So basically, it talks about extension of time and, but again, that comes down to final. They don't make it to final until you get what you want. So that's why I talked about delineating the five or six things or whatever it may be, you know, the items that you wanna see on the plan. That's their understanding of, okay, in order for me to get these plans, the final, I have to have these five or six things on the plan. So, yeah, they can't just come back with the same set of plans and say, "No, we don't care what you say." Number one, they need a variance. They're not gonna get passed without a variance. So, but number two, they need the site plan approved. And if you don't approve of the site plan, it doesn't matter.
Well, I guess, I mean, there's a different scenario. Let's say we all like the site plan, but they don't, and I'm talking kind of site plan. We like the site plan, but they're just, you know, we wanna see this commercial building relocated over here and they want this. To me, we need to table that application until they come back with a new preliminary plan showing our comments and recommendations to match to the best of their ability, you know, what is acceptable between the client and the board.
Right.
No, I know, I'm just...
You just keep tabling it as a generator. And you don't give preliminary approval until you've gotten everything.
I'm just making sure that I asked everybody else.
And so if you have questions and you need some more expertise that, you know, that internally the village can't provide and you want a consultant to look at something that's at the preliminary stage that you would ask, that you would do that, and so you table it to get back whatever you want from the village's own consultant. And Michael and kind of everybody else, I would just say that if you've got those concerns, don't think that everybody else can read your mind. Bring them up at the appropriate time and
I'm just letting...
and air them out. I understand.
Man? If we decide we like, let's say, Lobella to review something, can we just by our own board make that happen or do we have to go through the village board?
Well, I guess since the village code generally mandates the village engineer listed things, I don't think it really needs the approval of the, it doesn't need the approval of the board of trustees. Because I don't think...
They can't say no. If you, you know, they can't, they don't sit as the, you know, as a planning board. So you're the planning board, and if you want this, you know, your approvals ultimately are independent of anything the board of trustees, you know, does. They don't sit as some kind of a, you know, review authority or other sort of...
I guess I was concerned about the cost of what's gonna be passed on to the...
To the applicant.
It's gonna be passed on to the...
It's gonna be passed on to the applicant.
Engineering fees depends on project size. It's in our fee schedule, actually. And under subdivisions, it says, "Engineering fees depends on project size," and it says quote. So within our fee schedule, we have the, we can pass the fee up to them, to the fee schedule board.
I want to say a couple things. I think you have to be very willing to listen to what you have to say, your suggestions, willing to do it. You're worth it, Joe. I don't remember coming to a standstill letter. We have to check with somebody, you know, with their landscaper or something to come up with a compromise.
I only have problems with developers after the plan that they pass. Why do we gotta do that? Because they're on the plan.
I didn't think they really meant that.
Because that's not an approval.
Well, getting back to the comprehensive plan, could we get like an email for show of the parts of the comprehensive plan that you should be familiar with?
Sure.
Yeah, I can think of something about it.
It's actually not that big a document. Isn't it? Is it on the village website?
It is.
I think it is.
Yeah.
Save some paper and just look at the village website.
Wasn't aware there was that on the village website.
Because you've really gotta look at the document as a whole. You can't just take pieces of it out because it's why it's called comprehensive, you know, so.
But Bill, there's a new thing out there called computers. Let's free everybody with respect, I think, kind of. That being said, on a side note, we need to revisit the comprehensive plan.
That's a few years old, isn't it?
Yeah, we're five years in.
Do you do it every five years?
You need to do that.
Two thousand each one.
Because we're going through it now and we do it every ten years. Now it's been eleven years.
I do a town of plant targets and let it take.
I just do the engineering.
And actually, some of the things in the comprehensive plan came about last time. I mean, all these white paths and these entryways were actually mentioned in that plan.
There's no state requirement that you have to do a comprehensive plan or anything. It's more of a recommendation. It's a good idea. So if you go over it, it's not... Obviously, the older a comprehensive plan is, the probably harder it is to fit new development, you know, into the municipality, you know.
So Bill, it's not, it's not, it hasn't been practiced here to have Lobella engineering to look at the utility plan, the grading plan, the construction erosion plan, the landscaping.
Frankly, I think, you know, it's, given, given the amount of developable land that still exists within the village of Webster, you don't find many projects of this size that you would even consider sending to an engineer. You know, a site plan for somebody that's, you know, changing the use and opening up a new store on Main Street, internally, they're pretty well equipped to handle stuff like that. But, you know, so the village doesn't, the village doesn't get very many new subdivisions.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if that, when they put their other project that they referred to down State Road, which is town, if the town did that.
No, they have their own. Yeah, the difference with the town is, is their commissioner of public works is a licensed professional engineer.
Well, was. They always, yeah. But I've been trained in the stormwater pollution prevention stuff, so I know what to look for on the plans and so on. But Jake looks at the infrastructure according to our specs. There's not much to it.
Yeah, well, the harder things are, you know, infrastructure, the roads, the sewers, utilities, but more of the lighting and landscaping and some of the more aesthetic stuff, you know, that's, you know, you might want a consultant for that kind of thing. You know, or to interpret if someone submits a traffic study. You know, if you ever read one of those things.
You get insomnia.
I've never seen, I've never seen a traffic study submitted by a developer that comes to the conclusion that, oh, there's not gonna be a significant impact on traffic.
I've never seen one.
So you might wanna, you know, those kind of things, you might wanna submit to a, you know, a neutral third-party expert to say, "Well, would you go through this and see if you've come to the same conclusions?" Or, you know...
My favorite is, "Well, the state says we don't need to." That's my favorite.
Well, I've written though, so I put myself to sleep writing it.
So I personally have a question. I had to talk to Mike, Michael beforehand, is that the bottom line here is that why do we have a forty-foot step back? Why do we have a forty-foot step back? That's the question. And I understand what they're doing here by making it up a twenty-five-foot step back that allows them, at least in the back of the yard here, to add some space and, you know, ultimately put more units in it in the landmass that they're dealing. But so by giving them a variance, does that mess up something else because we didn't have that forty-foot step back?
Well, we're getting pretty specific on the project here. We should probably wait for the applicant to... And that's a fair question to ask, but I think it's fair when the applicant decides.
Well, I'm not... Yeah.
Should I ask Don or what? Do we have a...
Yes, double on your salary. Don't worry about it.
Well, we have a...
Voice of nothing, there's still nothing. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, we have a zoning board. Oh, yeah, zoning board bylaws.
Yeah.
Do we use those, do we modify them?
Well, I wasn't prepared to do that tonight. And had I been, we could've given them those bylaws and said, "These are the general laws or general way that we will operate." I don't know if we save that for our next meeting, but I think we start with that. And if we want to adopt it as is or modify it, we go, we go forward and do that. Could you even have some copy, please? It's... Yes, it is. While we go, go ahead. Did the planning board have so-called bylaws? There really, there really is no authority for a zoning board to adopt quote bylaws that sort of, because bylaws are binding in the context of, you have bylaws if you're a corporation or, you know, an entity. And the planning board is not a separate entity from the village of Webster. And you can have, if you wanna, if you wanna adopt, maybe call them guidelines for your procedure, recommended guidelines, you know, that's fine, but I certainly could not support bylaws. If you adopted bylaws, well, first of all, if you were to have bylaws, they can only be adopted by the board of trustees. I don't think you've got the authority to do quote bylaws that bound this group to something. So if you wanna change it to, because now you've got other considerations because you're acting as a planning board also. So, and frankly, I haven't looked at the so-called bylaws in a long time, but... So it's, you know, certainly have recommended procedures or processes or whatever, but just call them that.
Rules to abide.
Typically, you guys loosely follow the rules of the board. And I say loosely because you have allowed for changes on occasion, like for instance, you know, ordinarily, you know, after the applicant presents, then you have public comment. And you shut down the public comment. And then you guys in yellow begin to talk amongst yourselves and so on. But in the midst of that, someone would raise their hand and you've allowed more public comments after public comment has been passed. So the question is, do you wanna say, "Well, you know what? So the question is, do you want to say, "Well, you know what, we have these rules, no more public comment, we're done with public comment, sorry, thank you," but put your hand up? Or do you want to still, you know, have a loose form of public order? I mean, you do have order, but, I mean, it's kind of nice to allow people to, you know, all of a sudden, "Oh, jeez, I forgot to ask that question," to be able to have the freedom to do that. That's entirely up to you, I'm just saying, but in, in doing that, you know, it kind of, it gives you the freedom, up see, but it's kind of-
Go ahead.
I have a question, we were talking about landscaping and that, which brought me to the question, and I allow, thank you for allowing me the public comment.
You are welcome.
The planning board has made many decisions, and we've talked at several of recent, a couple of the more recent developments about saving existing trees that, in the development, which the planning board has recommended and said, and the most recent major development in the village, and the one previous to that, the first thing they did was, it went in and tore, cut down everything and built those and leveled the land. Now, what authority does any of these boards have after you give approval for the project to start? Is it up to somebody to go to Will? Is Will the one that's supposed to go and say, "Hey, you didn't do this," and is there any penalty that those boards can enforce for somebody who didn't follow your plans?
Well, let's, let's take a step back first and maybe ask Don, is there any enforceable action if they don't follow recommendations or planning, anyone? Well, I wouldn't use the word recommendation. That'd be more than a recommendation. If, if, if you give subdivision or site plan approval, and it's subject to certain conditions, like there is a landscaping plan that shows existing trees, usually they will show existing trees that are supposed to be there, and if they cut those trees down, then the board, in this case, the zoning board, has the authority to, you can revoke their building permits, you know, the building permit can be revoked, the staff work order can be, you know, served upon a moment. Is there an action that the board takes in session, or is that a recommendation that any member of the board? Well, the code enforcement officer would serve them with some kind of a notice that says, "You're in violation of these conditions of your site plan or subdivision approval, and you are directed to appear before the board on a certain date, a certain time to, you know, answer, answer that." And then, you know, because they've got an opportunity, you can't just do it by unilateral fiat, you know, they got an opportunity to have due process and, you know, an opportunity to be heard and all that notice. But they come before the board at a regular meeting, and, or an emergency, you can have a special meeting if it's duly noticed, and then you deal with it. Now, you got to be careful, you got to be careful because, you know, after, well, I suppose it was after the fact, you could make a plant, new bigger tree.
Exactly.
But you got to rely on, you got to rely on the, the village, you know, department of public works, your code enforcement people, to monitor projects as they're being built, because certainly you guys aren't going to be out there, you know, with the plans, making sure that they're compliant, but, you know.
I'll give you an example.
As boards, we do not have enforcement authority. That's, that's not our purview, that's not our value. We don't allow, we're not the police, you know, cite the subdivision police anymore.
So-
Except unfortunately, that falls back to the willing.
Yeah, for, for next month. I'll give you an example. Down north, when they built the three-story apartment building in the, in the Brownsville building, it's down in Morgan Park. What I do is, they'll tell me, you know, we did the planting and so on, so I'll, I'll make a copy of the plans, the planting schedule, and I'll go through one by one, and I'll cross up, yep, yep, and I'll make sure they leave the tags on the trees, depending on when they plant them, I can't tell, you know. But they did call me, and they said, "Hey, you know, are the plans that shows this particular type of plant?" And I go, "Yep." "The architect, or the, the landscaper can't hit that, that particular tree, how about we do this?" I go, "I'll call you back." I called three nurseries, found trees in every single nursery, same size. I called them, and I said, "Tell your, your landscaper to call this place, this place, and this place," because they all had the tree, and there's a long pause at the end. And then they'll say, "Well, well, what if we plant these trees?" I said, "Well, if you plant those trees, then you have to come back to planning board for approval for a change in site plan." And they're like, "What?" I go, "Yep." They said, "The plans that you have are binding, legal binding documents that were approved by the planning board, and you have to put in everything according to the plan. Any change, it has to come through planning board approval." They're like, "Never mind." So, that's the way I typically behave.
Anyone have any other questions? Bear with us, we are going to stumble from time to time, but I'm sure that we will pick ourselves up and get back on the right track. If no one has any objection, we've gotten through this part, I'm going to pause the meeting, or whatever the appropriate term is, close this portion, turn off the recorder, and then we will open again at seven o'clock as soon as our applicant-
Recede.
Recede. Recede! I like it. Thank you.